Clerk Siegrist could call the roll.
Trustee Anthony is not here yet. Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek. Let the record reflect the Clerk Siegrist. He's in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman is not in attendance. And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for motion to adopt the agenda for the special meeting of the Board of Trustees as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Those in favor of the motions presented, please state aye.
Aye.
If the motion carries. This evening, we have a special study session with two topics. First is the audit presentation based on Plant Moran's recent completion of work performed, as well as a second topic, which is our roads improvement plan. We've got an update from Director Foss, based on some of the new materials to get ready for tomorrow night's presentation to the public. That being said, Wendy, do you want to kick us off?
Absolutely. It is that time of year again. The audit has been wrapped up. First, we have Sarah Clay here from our department, and Carolyn Cox, who do really all the heavy lifting here, get all the audit work papers ready, and I'm sure the auditors will kind of ditto that they put a lot of hard work into that, and it's a pretty clean audit, very clean audit at the end of the day. So, thank you guys for your hard work. Mike Swartz is here, as well as Melanie Crowther. I'm not sure if I said that right or not. She in charge, and Alicia took the year off this year for, I don't know, maternity leave, some excuse with a baby or something. But she wanted to get out of the house and join us for tonight. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mike to start us off.
Thank you, Wendy. What we're going to do this evening, in the interest of time, we're just going to cover some of the financial highlights in a graph presentation. Melanie's going to do that. And she'll touch on the single audit as well, and then I'll cover the letter to the board that we sent as well. Before she gets into the graphs, though, I do want to compliment the finance team on the shape of your accounting records again this year. It is a very clean audit. It's the way audits are supposed to be. Too many of our clients have a lot of accounting adjustments that we have to do with the audit. But this is not that way. Your staff does a great job getting ready for us. They do a great job all year. Their budgeting is top-notch as well. So, compliments to your finance team, and Wendy runs a pretty clean ship there as well. So, our opinion on your financial statements this year is an unmodified opinion, which means that everything is accounted for the way it should be, basically. You follow all the rules and accounting rules and regulations. There was an emphasis on matter, paragraph in your opinion this year, because you adopted GASB 75, which we also sent a letter to you explaining that matter as well. But it was a good early adoption of that GASB, and we compliment you on that, and it was done perfectly. So, with that, Melanie's going to go through some of the graphs. Stop us with questions if you have them, and then I'll touch on the letter after that. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. So, I'm going to go pretty high level. If you guys have any questions at all, feel free to stop me. So, the first graph we're going to look at is the general fund. And just to remind you, in your financial statements, in the front part of the statements, it does a combined general fund, which includes some other funds under GASB 54 required to be combined into the general fund. But these graphs just purely look at just the general fund, because that's what the township budget's on, is just the general fund. So, just reminding you that there is that kind of disconnect. If you were to look in your financial statements, just the general fund would be included in your required supplemental information, which is towards the back of the CAFR. But just to remind you that this is just the general fund and not that combining general fund you see in the front part of the statements. So, with that kind of caveat in place, looking at this year, so total revenues were about $27.5 million. So, that's an increase from last year of about 5%. And most of that, your still main sources of revenue are going to be your state sources, which includes your state shared revenue, which we have a graph on later, which talks about how much the state is giving you, and then also some state grants were thrown in there. And then your other biggest source of revenue at 6.2 million is property taxes. And we also have a graph later that goes into property taxes. But as you can see, that's had a gradual uptick, which is not in, a lot of communities are taking a lot longer to see an uptick in property taxes. So, we'll kind of go into that and look at the different assessment values, just because it takes a while for property taxes to get back up to those earlier values that we were seeing. And with that, talking about property taxes, we still say timing of property tax decreases, but actually, the township has seen property tax increases over the last couple of years, and that's been mostly due to the new building and stuff like that. But as you can see, what we're trying to show with this graph is that the assessment date is a different date than your levy date, which is a different date than your budget date. So, it just takes some time. A lot of people like see that the assessment values are starting to creep up, but it takes a couple more years for that to creep up. If you actually looked at budget year 2017, that was assessed in 2015, levied in 2016, but it's revenue in 2017. So, just remembering that there's a little bit of disconnect between the timing of that. And for 2017, there was about a 2.2% increase in property tax values, which is on the higher end of some of our other communities. And then for 2018, actually, there is an even bigger increase projected to be shown, which we get from the assessors, and we saw the levy of that already in 2017. And that increase is actually nearly closer to 5%. So, that is great news, but it's still going to take some time, so just want to put that caveat in place. So, talking about taxable value, and kind of I was saying that it's not kind of on trend with other places, we actually did this graph back in 2009, and we projected, now, this is get back to the 2007 value with no inflation adjustments. So, there's no inflation in here. We were projecting that it wasn't going to be until budget year 2024. Looking at how things are going at the moment for the township, it's actually going to be closer to budget year 2021. So, you are seeing some, when we first came back out here in 2009, we were kind of all doomsday, that it was going to take a long time. But Canton Township really looked at the budget and really started to have some new building that other communities are not seeing. Other communities are not seeing this quick rise in property tax values. I also talked about the fact that your state shared revenue did increase. This is going to be on the state's fiscal year, so it's a little bit of a different fiscal year to yours. They're actually a September year-end. And for 2017, the property, the state shared revenue did increase. It increased by about 5.6%. And then it's projected to increase a further 2.7% for 2018. Again, this is just purely projected by the state. They're still doing a lot of talk in Lansing about state shared revenue. They're looking at the equation, and they're also determining whether some of the supplemental information, extra CVT, is actually going to come out of the budget. So, at the moment, it's looking like there's going to be some increases, but this is still subject to change. Lansing is still looking at it. There's still actually quite a few sessions before they leave in June, and then they've got a lot of new people coming in. So, we might see some adjustments. So, it's looking good, but.
Sorry, it looks like there's acronym changes, CVT versus EVIT.
Yes. So, a few, Lansing changed their mind a few times to begin with. It was part of, they started this new EVIT program for a period of time, and it's the same kind of program. You're required to do a whole bunch of metrics as part of it, and then they changed it to this CVT, which is now cities, village, and townships. It pretty much comes out to the same thing, but in all of those different acronyms, they changed the formula for how you can receive those dollars. I think they just.
Technical perspective, do we use these shared, these values, CVT values, in our future forecasting in terms of revenue? Or have we been zeroing that out and not assuming that it's going to happen?
We take a look at, when we're doing our budgets, the state usually has some projections as well. So, we take a look at the state's projections and where we have been, and increase those by about 2% when we're budgeting, when we're doing our forecasting.
Or.
We just, we take it. We don't look at the CVT and, you know, try to figure out, based on our population and whatnot, where that's going to be adjusted. We just take a look at where has it been? We increase it by 2%, unless there's anything that's unusual that we think is going to change in the upcoming years. We don't do that. So, I would anticipate that we're going to get a pretty large increase in 2020. I don't know how we're going to, or 2021, once the new population census has been done. And I haven't figured out quite yet how we're going to work that into the 2020 budget. But as far as going up to 2019 goes, we just take a look at, here's what the payments are. Right.
With the kind of unrest in Lansing, we would recommend that's probably a better idea than trying to adjust to all the different bills that are coming out, because each time the bill looks slightly a little bit different, that you'd be taking a lot of time trying to adjust the numbers up and down, that a 2% increase is probably a more conservative Similar to what we did with revenues, this is going to be your expenditures over the five-year period. Again, this is just the general fund, not that combined general fund that we were talking about. And expenditures, even though revenues increased, expenditures actually decreased for the general fund. They actually went down to 25.5 million, which was a decrease of about 2%. And then, looking at your expenditures, your general government is still going to be your largest expenditure, which is very consistent with other townships. Other townships might have public safety as their largest expenditure, but as the township has separate funds for those, that might be one you're trying to compare to other townships. They might not have, they might have public safety within their general fund. But general government expenditures, that one did actually increase to 8.4 million. The place where you saw the decrease was in that transfers to other funds. There was a, last year, there was a 4.7 million transfer to community improvement, and this year, it was only 2, I think it was 2.1 million. And that is one of the transfers that actually is within a general fund, so it's not showing up in your front statement. So, it just makes it, it gets eliminated for financial statement purposes, but it's included on this graph.
If you recall, the board had decided to transfer $3 million into community improvement when general fund, back at the end of 2015, had much more favorable results than initially budgeted. So, that was set aside to offset for capital that we have been deferring. So, there's that money that's set aside right now for, it's called assigned fund balance to help offset future capital needs that we are coming up with right now doing our CIP project.
Expenditures, I just wanted to let you know that for all of the expenditures, you were within your budget categories, that we had no budget overrun. So, great news. The next graph looks at fund balance compared to your expenditures. So, this is only going to include your unassigned fund balance. So, that's your fund balance that you've not either had restrictions on it, or you've assigned it for a specific purpose. And at the moment, for current year, the unassigned fund balance is 5.1 million. You'll see we call it unreserved versus unassigned. That's because there was another name change related to the GASB, for GASB 54. So, now it's called unassigned, but in the past, it's called unreserved. And if you look at your expenditures compared to your unassigned, which is kind of your rainy day fund, that's about 20% of your expenditures is in that unassigned bucket. And that is within the policy that is included at the township, which requires a 15% minimum. So, it has increased a little bit from last year, that rainy day fund. So, we just wanted to also include kind of a year-end review in here. We just wanted to kind of give kudos to the township, that that long-term budgeting really has paid off. Township's really in good financial position. It's going to help with the fact that you've got these legacy costs, and you've got these deferred capital, existing capital projects. So, by doing that budgeting and being conservative, you've got the funds to look into now some of those long-term capital projects that you've been looking at, and also making some of those legacy costs. With that, the township did make an additional 3 million contribution to pre-fund the OPEB legacy cost. And as Mike said, this year, the township did early adopt GASB 75, which actually helped save the township some funds, because otherwise, you were going to be required to have two different actuary reports, one for this year, and then you would have had to have another one next year. Normally, you only need an OPEB valuation two times, every two years. So, by getting that early 75 one, you actually saved some dollars, so that's great. And then, you were one of the, I think there was only a handful of communities that actually early adopted 75. Any questions on kind of the finances?
Unfunded legacy costs now? What percentage?
I have the page. Am I, sorry about that. The OPEB is about 20% funded, and pension, I think, was about 63%? 60?
Yeah.
But that OPEB, we went from about a 10% funding to a 20% funding as a result of some of the changes that we made to the plans and the excess contributions that we made.
Across the state for that, in other communities? Are we ahead of the board, or?
You're in good shape. You've got Oakland County, that's probably 100% pre-funded, because they bonded for it, and you've got most other communities that have pre-funded very little. So, you're in better shape than most. You're in good shape, and you've got the ability to continue to meet your obligations going forward better than most communities do. So, you're not 100% funded like a few communities might be, but you're in very solid condition.
Is it target, I mean, obviously, 100 is, but what's, I mean, from what I understand, like you want to be at least 40, is that correct?
That's what the state came out with, some regulations, new laws, and they're, like, they're requiring the township finance staff to do some additional reporting right after the audit year is finished. And the bogies for it are 60% funded for pension, 40% for OPEB. But there's also some bogies for percentage of your total revenues that are paid towards your annual requirement for those. In your pension, you're over 60%, so you pass that. In your OPEB, you're under the 40%, but the percentage of your annual expenditures that is required for funding is lower than, is higher than, is lower than their requirement. So, you pass that test. So, as far as that new state law is, you pass the test, and you don't have any additional requirements for developing action plans to, you know, come into compliance with the law. So, that law really wasn't set up for Canton Township. It's set up for everybody, but it really was targeted at the communities that don't pre-fund at all. Targeted at them to develop some plans and processes to start either reducing their OPEB future liabilities, or starting to pre-fund it where they can.
Putting our plans at all, to increase that at all?
Yes.
I'm going year-to-year budgeting, but the idea is to set it aside, pay down more than we have to each year until, I think we're 20-year plan is what we've kind of sketched out.
Yeah, the, we had the actuary, build that into the actuary report, and I think I forwarded a copy of that to the board, and it did have, if we pre-funded it just $1 million a year, we were going to be fully 100% funded in, I believe, 20 to 25 years. This year, we did the $3 million contribution, because we had some excess funds. And on top of it, I believe it was March, April or so, when the state had released the initial listing of the people who did not pass the initial reporting period. And there's a lot of communities on there who didn't pass, based on the new requirements that the state put in in January 31st or December 31st, when they passed that legislation. We do not anticipate being on that list of people who do not pass, communities that do not pass. We are expecting to pass that. I spoke to some people who were involved with the legislation, and I said, "We're going to be under 40% funded." And they said, "Canton Township is not the target. Canton Township has already reduced our liability by $14 million, because of the other changes that we did." They're targeting the communities that are waiving the Public Act 152, that aren't making any adjustments to the retiree healthcare, that are not making any, addressing anything. So, even if we, even if we didn't have that second caveat that was not going to make us pass, my understanding, based on everything, was the state would say, "You already, you're already making strides towards it." If we had to fill out a waiver, that we would have been granted the waiver, because we've already done in advance the required things that we should have been doing upfront.
Thanks. But it's to our advantage to try to pay down as much as.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we definitely are. I mean, like I said, we had extra money at the end of this last year. We could do it within the budget, so we transferred the money. So, we are definitely making strides towards that. You're welcome.
Sir Anthony, it's your turn to ask your annual question. It's been going for nine years. What they basically have told us is, "We're in pretty good shape, John, and we're going to be okay."
You know, I just had the one question I'd pause. Better than most. There's future financial issues in front of you. You're addressing road issues, which you don't technically own the roads, but there's still issues in your township, so you're addressing that. You're addressing the, you know, the OPEB, the retirement issues that. Continuing to build your revenue base, which is great to provide the continued services to the township. So, you're kind of clicking.
Is there one issue that faces local governments above all else, or not?
Legacy cost is the biggest issue that faces local government. The other issue that you all have to deal with is additional requirements that come your way without the. Public safety staff are outstanding. And from a finance standpoint, you're dealing with the public safety costs properly. So, you're doing a lot of things right as a township.
Thank you for, I have a lot of confidence in you and your company, and been through this a couple of times before. Always ask you the same question, you always, but I, seriously, I appreciate you and your company, and the report, it looks good, looks good.
Could you just quick, I'm sorry, explain what GASB 75 is?
That is the new OPEB requirement. So, before, you only were required to include a liability for any unfunded. So, if you didn't make your required contribution, even though it was called required, it wasn't actually required, kind of weird, kind of, and so you'd only put that unfunded piece on it. GASB 75 says, "There's all this liability that you're not projecting for all these future years." It was in a footnote disclosure, but 75 takes that entire liability of how much you really think OPEB is going to cost and put it onto your balance sheet. It's on your government-wide balance sheet, so it's not in your modified accrual funds. It's similar to, a couple of years ago, there was GASB 68, which was the pension standards, which also brought the pension, the full pension liability onto the books. GASB 75 took a couple more years to bring that full post-employment healthcare cost onto your books, just because a lot of people weren't really knowing. There was a footnote in the back that kind of said, "Here's this big liability," but people weren't getting to the back of the financial statements to see this big liability and realizing that it's out there. So, 75 is trying to bring that to the front of your statements, to bring it to people's attention.
Just reported differently.
Yeah.
If you look at motor company's statements and compared them to yours in the past, you would see a huge liability on their statements for this type of thing, and yours would have been buried in a footnote. Now, it's reported similarly.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Mike, I think that concludes the presentation. Is there additional material? I'm sorry? Okay.
I was just going to quickly cover, we have a separate report for the single audit this year. We were required to do the federal program audit. This year, we tested two major programs, your community block ran and your assistance to firefighters, and we had no findings related to that. The single audit is a lot more compliance-based. It's a lot more looking at the rules and looking at the federal regulations, and there's a lot more testing involved in that single audit. So, it's great that we have, we've had no findings. We did not test a single audit last year. So, normally, when you haven't tested it for a couple of years, there might be something that's missing, but the township's internal controls, we did not find a problem with the single audit. So, just wanted to make that, good job there.
And also, there's a letter that we issued to the board. It's a 10-page letter. It's in two sections. Typically, it's in three sections. First section is required communication to the board, required according to AICPA. Everybody has to communicate these things. Typically, the second section is a discussion of significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. We didn't have any. We didn't find any. You didn't have any that we found. So, that section was, is not required. And so, the last section, section two, is just legislative or informational items. If I can walk through these letters real briefly with you. Section one starts on page two. There is a comment in the fourth paragraph down that we did find an issue when we were doing some testing off in remote locations. We found an issue where there was some personal information that was not as secure as it should be. So, you know, finance dealt with that immediately, took care of it. It's not an issue going forward, but we did have to report that to you. It's not a financial implication to the township at all. It's a good reminder to everybody as to how things need to be handled. In our significant audit findings area, we talk about, again, the fact that you implemented GASB 75. I won't go into that more. If you look at page three, the third paragraph talks about some of the more sensitive estimates that are included in your audit, which I think are probably of interest to you. Self-insured liability is a big estimate that gets recorded in your financial statements. The OPEB liability is a big estimate, as is pension liability. Those are determined by actuaries. They're determined by third parties. The township works with them to make sure that they're comfortable with the estimated liabilities. We review them to make sure we're comfortable. Everybody's comfortable, but they're still estimates. So, we want to make sure you're aware of that. And then also, you know, pending property tax appeals, it's not as big of an issue as it was five years ago, three years ago, but it's, there's still some estimating involved in that, and you should be aware that some of the numbers in your statements are just estimates related to that. We're comfortable with all your estimates. I think your finance team is as well, but we just wanted to make sure you were aware of them. Fast forward to, all the other narrative in this, in section one, is pretty standard and what I think you should expect to see. Everything was done well by your team. On page five and six, there's some rather insignificant past adjustments when looking at your financial statements. I don't think I'll go into them. As you look at section two, on page seven, the first items, the F65 and the updated chart of accounts, your finance team is just on top of that. You should have a lot of confidence that these items are being handled appropriately. We do. They're really good in this regard. Federal revenue, revenue sharing, as Melanie touched on just a little bit ago, is expected to have a little bit of a bump. It's probably expected to have a little bit more of a bump than you project, but I think being conservative on state shared revenues is a good idea. If you look at page eight, let's go down to the new legislation, and that's some of the stuff that we talked about related to the new law for OPEB and pension. There's a special form that needs to be filled out by your finance team and submitted by the end of June. I think that's already done. It just hasn't been submitted until the audit was complete. It's, there's not a lot of gray in that form. It's pretty black and white as to what you report and how it gets reported. Then the state looks at it, sees if you pass the provisions in the law, which you should, and you probably won't hear much from them. If you hadn't, then they would say, "Okay, you have violated the law. You have to come up with a plan or request a waiver." That shouldn't, as we talked about, that shouldn't be the issue here. So, I think you'll continue to hear more about it, because there's a lot of communities that are going to be dealing with this. But you already deal with it, and you deal with things in advance, which is why you're not having to deal with things more so right now. Proposed legislation on page nine, it's really mostly related to dark stores, and, you know, whether they should or shouldn't be in your property assessments and your comparables. Obviously, they shouldn't be if it's me or you looking at it, but they have to address that in the law so that it's handled right. And that's really the bulk of what we wanted to talk to you about tonight. I know we took a little bit longer than we had, but if there's any questions, or if you can ask tonight, you can also contact any of us at any time.
Questions? Thank you very much again, Mike. Thank you very much again, Mike, Melanie, do appreciate it.
A pleasure to serve the township.
Thank you.
Pleasure to serve the township.
Our next agenda item is a little update on Rhodes Improvement Plan, and it's, Tim's going to share with us some new data or information that the board probably has not seen or has seen very recently. So Tim's going to kind of take us through those, those items to get us prepared for our public meeting tomorrow night, our public forum. And with that being said, Wendy's going to open up with some financial data.
Yeah, so, Tim, I don't, there you go. So today's study session, you know, Pat already just touched on it, that this is, the, the purpose of this is to help get everybody ready to help educate the public tomorrow. So get any questions answered, kind of walk around and show what the different maps are, and Tim's going to take care of the majority of that. So we do have three public information sessions on the calendar, one for tomorrow in this room from four to seven, two weeks from tomorrow at the Summit in the Park, is in the banquet room, in the, in the big banquet facility from four to seven, and then on July 28th, which I believe is a Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So if you could get those dates on your calendar, that'd be great if we're not already. So I think we, I think you guys have seen this, but I just want to verify and validate that what the ballot language is asking for is 1.45 mils for 20 years. So in year one, this does not include any money from the DDA, but year one, that would mean about $5.5 million of revenue for roads. The way the, the board, and we talked about dividing that up, was 30% of that total is going to go for the local county roads, so the subdivision roads. So that's about $1.6 million to, for subdivisions, and if you recall, there is going to be a required match. So any subdivision can request up to $200,000, and there's varying levels. If it's up to $50,000, it's a 5% match, up to $100,000, 10%, and then up to $200,000, a 20% match. So we are asking for a match there. The primary county roads is 55%, and again, that's your Canton Centers, Beck's, Lilly's, Cherry Hills, those, those are the primary county roads, and we're going to allocate 55% of that mils towards that. So that's about $3 million. And then we have 15% we're allocating to the state roads, or about $800,000. Are there questions on those? Okay, I will turn it over to Tim.
So I'm just going to take you through kind of what the plan is for the local county subdivision roads, the, the major roads and the state road, and then we'll, we'll open it up for some questions. But before we do that, I wanted to just let you know, these are, we've got the boards up for tomorrow already, so that the board will have an opportunity, maybe even after the meeting, or if we finish before seven a little bit, to walk around and take a look at, look at some of the boards. Some of the information is literally hot off the press, information that we still got today from our consultants regarding some of the road ratings. So certainly walk around and take a look at those boards. We will have some handouts available tomorrow. A couple of those handouts are already on the back table for tonight, should any public show up and be interested. So the game plan for the local subdivision roads for 2019 will be to do a crack sealing, that's something that's done on the asphalt roads, and then joint sealing, which is something that's done on concrete roads typically. Where those treatments are beneficial, so not every crack is going to get sealed or repaired, but where it makes sense to do crack and joint sealing, our proposal is to do that. Also do some basic repairs to cracked and settled pavements around catch basins and manholes. These, this is kind of slow tedious work, time-consuming work, but it's work that can be done in advance of doing some bigger repairs over the remaining 19 years of, of the program. If budget permits, the plan would be to also try and do some additional, we call it selective panel replacements, and some selective asphalt repairs in the neighborhoods. Since we have not scoped out the exact detail of this program yet, we would need to do that if the actual, if the millage does pass, we would undertake that effort probably sometime this fall. So we would know more what we would have in the way of a budget to work with. As Wendy had mentioned, there's 1.6 million roughly for the local roads. In addition to that, we got the letter from Wayne County that committed to put an additional $400,000 into the local roads, so we would have a program in year one that equals $2 million for the local road improvements. Another key with the local subdivision roads is, these projects are going to be complex. They're going to take a lot of coordination. We have to coordinate with not only other utility work that we're doing across the community, but we have to coordinate with things like bus, busing for the schools. We have to coordinate with other things that are going on in the neighborhoods. We have to coordinate with the major road projects so that we don't literally kind of go in and bomb a neighborhood out and concurrently be out there repairing the major roads on either side that the residents use for access into that neighborhood. So there's, there's a lot of coordination work that is going to be required. This will be a big program, and we're going to need the better part of a year to actually design that program together with our consulting engineers. We want success, and we don't want a nightmare, so we need that time to, to, to come up with a, a really well-thought-out program. On the primary roads, we call those major roads, we include in this pot, if you will, not only the county primary roads, but other collector roads. So if you think of a road like Lots, from Van Born Road at the very south end of Canton, all the way to Ford Road, that road is not a primary road. It looks like a primary road, it looks like a major road, but under the definition of the state and Wayne County, that is a, that's a collector road. That is treated just like a local subdivision street. But we intend, for the purposes of this, these projects, because that is a big collector road, to lump Lots in, Hanford in, Salts in, those types of roads into this, the major road pot. It would be certainly taking away from the subdivision work, which already has the lesser amount of the millage, if we do so otherwise. And then the other thing that we can't forget, you know, taxpayers also include the businesses in the community, and any industrial road like Copperneck, like Rhonda, these roads are county roads, and they too need to be included in the program, so they would be included as part of the major road networks, but they are not primary roads. So just so that the board has that understanding in terms of how we think as, as engineers on, on this program. The other point I wanted to bring up is, we did indicate to the board at our past several sessions that we would include the completion of any sidewalk or pathway gaps in the program, and we're doing that only where there actually is a road project. So if we're touching that section of road and there's an existing gap or a deficient gap, then we'll take care of that while, while we're in along that major county road. The next point, and this was a point that came out of the Rhodes Task Force recommendations, we will be using traffic counts in order to prioritize the projects on the major roads. So if you had a couple roads in a given year that had the same PESR rating, then we would give the nod in that particular year to the road that carries the higher volume of traffic. The county has agreed, as well in that same letter that was shared with the board, to provide $750,000 into the year one of the major road program. So in addition to the $3 million that we had, that would come from the millage, we'd have this $750,000. So here's our list, I realize this is a little bit fine to read, but we did provide a hard copy, that's your blue sheet, the blue spreadsheet that, that all the board members got, and any public that are here, there's copies of that in the, on the back counter. We have 16 projects that have been identified that totals some $2.8 million. We put a contingency on top of that, just as we do with all construction projects, and we also add in the engineering, so that brings it up to about $3.8 million in total, which roughly matches the $3.75 million that we would have in, in terms of revenues in year number one. There also is a map, it is in the back corner over there, that shows the location of those projects, and that might be helpful for the board to take a look at together with the list, so when fielding any questions during the road millage quest, sessions, that you would be able to point out kind of where these projects are going to be. The other thing, and I'll, I'll come back to it near the end, is there'll be some engineers in the room, as well as myself, to assist the board with any of the technical information, like, you know, what are we planning to do out here? What's the type of treatment that would likely occur? Not been designed yet, but we have a sense of some of the repairs that could be done on, on certain sections of roads. And on the state roads, the, the plan really looks like this. We did, as the, as the slide shows at the bottom, MDOT has made a commitment to fund the completion of the design and the construction of the Ford Road Boulevard in the next five-year transportation program, if this millage passes, and if we live up to the commitments that we outlined in the letter to MDOT a couple of weeks ago. So what that really means is, we are funding 30% of the design, which is roughly a one-year-long project. We're funding the right-of-way acquisition, which is an additional one to two years. A little bit of those two tasks could overlap, so it's conceivable that all of that could have, could be accomplished in two years, and I'm hopeful it would. But when you're acquiring right-of-way, it can be sensitive relationships with the, with the private property owners, and sometimes you can run into some difficult negotiations with, which drags things out. Then that would really be kind of Canton's contribution to the project, and then MDOT would pick up the balance of the design, and they'd pick up the construction. We would share, per our letter, to the tune of 15% of the total construction costs. So those numbers fit within the millage amounts that are proposed, and you would see work, probably construction work over a two-year period. They would likely do what's called the Hagerty Road Boulevard, both north and south of Ford first, because it is needed once the Boulevard along Ford Road is actually constructed. So in all probability, that would be done as part of kind of phase one, year one, the earliest being probably 2022. And then some minor work along the Ford Road Boulevard itself, and preparation of the right-of-way. And what I mean by that are things like removal of the garden walls, removal of sidewalks, relocation of utilities that are in the way. That's a lot of advanced work that needs to be done before wholesale road construction can come in and be performed. And then the bulk of the Boulevard work would be performed in the following year. You know, this is all subject to change, of course. Once a contractor bids on it, the contractor would, in large part, dictate what, what that schedule would look like, but this is both what we and MDOT think the general progression would be. At the last time we talked about this topic, this slide was labeled "good data needed", it's now labeled "good data obtained". So the board approved the work with Spalding De Decker and Associates. They've completed a complete, or a comprehensive PESR rating of all roads in the township, private and public. The, the results of those ratings are, are on the back counter. Those are actually the color-coded ratings that show everything from a zero to a, a 10, which is a brand-new road. The key point that I want to stress, though, is this data, well, not today, but probably tomorrow, it's going to be on the website. This is some of the data that we just obtained yet today, and was kind of freshly printed out for us. So this is what the data looks like, this is one sample. We have color-coded maps, this is the southeast quadrant of the township, so there's a big map on the back counter that shows this. You can see all the ratings of the various roads in the community, which, again, goes from, from one through 10. This graph, again, because of the scale, this was plotted for, the bar chart that is right behind Stephanie, that, that bar chart depicts two things. The upper chart shows what our current overall rating is in the township, and that's roughly 5.3 out of 10, so that is considered a fair rating. Fair is five, six, and seven. However, it is below what we call the inflection point of 5.7, 5.7. So when a, when a rating drops below 5.7, it drops exponentially fast. So it is a critical time in the age of our road system and the condition of our road system to start making an investment. If we don't, then the rating is going to drop very quickly over the next three to four years. What this graph depicts is a 20-year plan, assuming that Wayne County continues to spend about $3 million a year in capital road improvements in the community, which is pretty much on average what, what we've been seeing over the last 30 years. If that does occur, the rating would drop to about 2.6 at the end of that 20-year period. That is a poor road for, for the, for the sake of discussion. Again, roads zero through four are considered poor, 2.6 is, you know, kind of roughly half of the poor, so you're approaching the low end of that. The graph below this is a projection that actually utilizes the information from the Rhodes Task Force, where the Rhodes Task Force said, we wanted to get local roads to a PESR rating seven, and all the primary major roads to a PESR rating of eight, and how much money would we need to put in the system instead of 10 years, as suggested by the Rhodes Task Force, this is over 20 years, and that represents $11.5 million per year. So if you think of it in the context that we're putting $5.5 million in, per the millage, if it passes, to get it to sevens and eights across the board would take about $11.5 million. So the $5.5 is going to go a long ways. It doesn't get you to what was recommended by the task force, just so that's clear in the, in the board's mind. The last thing, and again, copies of this are on the, on the back counter, we've finalized the frequent-asked questions as they exist today. I wanted to just point out that we're going to have subject matter experts available. I gave you a list of kind of who those individuals are if you get specific questions at these meetings. Don't hesitate to use us, that's why we're here. We know the stuff well, and we can, we can explain it very clearly to, to the residents. Again, reemphasizing that it's on the website, all this stuff is on the website, you can download pretty much all of it now, except some of the PESR stuff. We're getting there with that, but we will be updating the information regularly, so, you know, our suggestion is to continue to direct people to the website as much as you can, because some of those documents are, are fluid or dynamic, and, and we're changing those all the time. So my last comment is, it's on the website, just in case you didn't hear that part 15 times earlier, and it's www.canton-mi.org/roads. Anybody types that in, they'll get our roads page, and if they just go to the township's main website, it's one of the three main kind of featured buttons on the, on the township website. So with that, I guess Wendy and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have, or like I say, if, if you want to talk after the meeting, take a look at the boards between now and seven, whatever you like, kind of, we're at your pleasure.
A lot of people are going to ask a lot of detailed questions, probably, because we've been getting things like that, like what's the concrete going to be made of, what's the process, are we going to be answering, are you, the experts going to be answering questions like that also?
Yes, I think, you know, one of the difficult questions that often comes up is about these road warranties, and that's a question that many people beat on, and the reality, like I've, I've told the board before, warranties can be beneficial. We can include warranties in our program. What it does is warranties drives the cost up a lot, and it means instead of maybe doing 16 projects on that list, we do eight, or we do five, or we do nine, you know? So that's got to be really kind of a conscious decision. You know, my recommendation would be, we follow, we follow the state's guidance on that with respect to, to warranties.
You're going to be part of deter- You're going to be part of determining anybody, I mean, who gets to fix the roads in terms of the construction crew and everything, correct?
Correct. The, the, you know, the benefit of this program is that this will be Canton money. The county will supplement Canton money. Canton will pick the contractors. Canton will design. Canton will bid it. Canton will administer it. Basically, the county will help us prioritize some of the work and will permit the work at no cost to the township. But this will, in essence, be a, a special Canton project.
Jim, some of the road work that's been done so far is lousy. I'm trying to think of a polite way to say it. It's, it's crap. I mean, they, they do Canton Center Road, and in a year, it's, is there a difference in, in the way we're going to spend the taxpayers' money in Canton to ensure we get, get the best bang for a buck, the right concrete, those sort of things?
Well, as I mentioned, we'll be doing the design, so we have, we have some control over that, that aspect of it. We will be doing all of the construction inspection. That's a key component to some of the failures. For example, the failures that you saw north of Ford Road, along Canton Center Road that the county did some patching on last year. That was largely as a result of the reinforcing steel and the concrete slab floated to the surface before the concrete cured. So that caused, after some cracks appeared in the concrete, that caused some premature failure. The steel's too close to the surface. It causes the surface to spall off and pop, you know, a two-inch-deep pothole. So those are inspection issues that, that can be addressed, and we will have private contracted consultants that'll be doing, doing those inspections. And I just, you know, confident that, that they'll do a good job. If you look at Canton Center from south of Bushes to just south of Palmer Road, that was one of the last sections of Canton Center that we did, that piece of road is holding up extremely well. Very few cracks, very few chips. It's holding up really, really well. Obviously, the section north of there, not so much. So I'm confident that, you know, that looks good. Lots is looking good. Sheldon Center, which is another project we did fairly recently, you know, those are all holding up really good. So, you know, I have some, some confidence in, in, you know, putting forward a, a good program.
So in terms of, people are asking about the cracks. They just did Lily Road last week, throwing the asphalt in the cracks, and then they just did, tapped it down with a shovel and it came right out. Are we going to be doing a different process for those, for that part of it?
Yeah, we will probably not be doing like patch, cold patching, or even, for that matter, small hot patching like, like is being done on Lily Road right now. That's going to be something that the county will do. We'll be doing kind of larger, larger construction repairs, not, not really cold and hot patching, per se. We'll be like removing large panels of concrete. We'll be milling asphalt down and replacing asphalt, more substantial, what they call structural repairs.
But we still have to go after the county for that patching, then?
Yes, yep.
Is it your intention to do any projects where you do concrete patching, like was done on Canton Center Road, or will we just be doing complete panel replacements and things like that?
No, we'll, we'll do some patching, yeah. We're patching merits, you know, the, the, the repair, yes. So, you know, to fund reconstruction i- is extremely costly. And where most of the panel is still in good, good shape, you would typically look towards doing just repairs.
Inspections to make sure that we don't have a similar steel issue, like?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Summer, please.
Just a few requests, actually, for the frequently asked questions on the website. A few things that I'm hearing are, well, they're not really going to spend the money on roads. And I know that if we, if we are able to pass this millage, that the money does have to go to roads, I think, clarifying that on there. And also that there's not enough space on Ford Road to put a Boulevard. And the fact that engineering studies have been done, and we've actually researched this issue for years and years, and we know that a Boulevard does fit on Ford Road. I think adding that to the frequently asked questions would be helpful for a lot of members of the community.
No further question. That concludes our study session. We've got here, what do we have, two minutes? Yes.
Does anybody need a quick break, or can we continue to forge ahead?
Well, do you want to call for public comment of the?
For the study session? Absolutely.
Before we conclude the study session, is there any public comment regarding the audit presentation or what was just covered the last half hour? Are there any questions regarding those or statements? Okay, seeing none. Call for a motion to close the study session?
So moved.
Favor, state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that gives us one minute till we segue over to the board meeting. Yeah, go ahead, Diane. We'll, we'll wait for you, Diane. Summer and Pat, in fact. Guys, give us about four minutes, if you would. Five minutes.
Could please call the roll.
Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hiddick.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance, Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman is not here. And Supervisor Williams.
Hello.
Call for an adoption of the agenda as presented without change.
So moved.
Second.
Favor the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes to be approved. We do those one at a time. Could call for a motion to approve the May 8, 2018, as amended, minutes?
So moved.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Offer a motion to approve the May 22, 2018, minutes as presented.
So moved.
Favor the motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Now would we have in our agenda any citizens' non-agenda items or comments? Now would be the time for any, please, Mr. Miller, if you'd like to speak.
There's been a claim on a busted rim, some folks that I know, to Mr. Evans' office. I got a letter. And it states basically, Public Act 170, MCL 691.1403. If you hit a pothole tonight and it's raining, say in February or March, you have to give them a 30-day notice so, before you can even possibly get a claim on a rim or tire. You, you, in other words, if you see a pothole and you're going down the road, you have to give them a 30-day notice. But if the pothole, for example, pops up tonight and is freezing thawing, you should have given them a 30-day notice, according to this letter. I'd like to know, on the love of God, that law, who made it? You know, the lawmakers made it, or the county people made it? How you can get a claim on your property damage? Now, let's go forward here. On pothole patching, it never gets to seem to be done. They always fill it in partially, or they fill in part of the holes on one side of the road, and will come back a month later and do them on the other side. Cherry Hill, starting from Cherry Hill on Lily Road to Ford Road going north, that section is terrible. Cherry Hill to Ford Road, going north on Sheldon, that section is terrible. Michigan, from Michigan Avenue going west on Geddes to Ridge Road, that did get patched at the intersection, about four holes there. And the rest of it, from Michigan Avenue and Sheldon Road approximately, going west to Ridge Road, is never touched for the past two weeks. I go out there and visit people three times a week. Palmer Road, from Cherry Hill to Ford Road going north on Sheldon, that, like I said, that hasn't been done. Now, on the subjects of the roads this evening, I don't know why this is even brought up onto a, to a vote, or any, any reason why it should. The county raised taxes on people's plates. They've raised the gas, or the, the county or the state has done that. The state has raised gas tax. Maybe they can pick up some money on liquor, cigarettes, and we have medical marijuana in the state. Maybe they need to get some money and raise it from there. And I'd like to know, if Mrs. Slavens been in, in the legislation up there in the past, I'd like to know why there hasn't been a bill introduced possibly for that four-foot road bike that, that, that the car people are paying for when they buy a gallon of gas or they buy their plates. Somebody's paying for that four-foot of asphalt, wherever it is in the state, Ann Arbor, Celine, here, wherever it's at, they could tax those bikes. Now, I'd like to know what, like I said, I'd like to know, and I, and the issue is, and if I have to fill out a foyer for it, years ago, I was underneath an impression from ta, other treasurers in this township, that this township floated bonds for Palmer Road, which is a county road. Sheldon Road's a county road. Paid for servicing that and paved it. I'd like to know why we floated bonds for that, this township, for a county road. They're responsible for that. They should have took care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Very good. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is if the treasurer would, would like to pay the bills, make a motion to pay the bills, Treasurer Slavens.
Pizer, I make the motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have first up on the agenda tonight, a legislative update by Kamler, Reed, Corey, and much more. Stephanie Johnson has joined us this evening. She presented to each of the board members a packet in front of you, you should have. Stephanie, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Today is the, the final day of legislative session prior to the summer recess. So today has been a fairly active day. This report is actually already outdated, to be honest with you. I, I printed it off about 3 o'clock, and it's already changed. But the, the legislature just voted on the final budget. It's on its way to the governor's desk, and so it's a fairly intensive budget, this go-around, not just because they did the fiscal, fiscal year 18, 19 budget, but they also did a supplemental to the current year budget. And that's what the, what I want to lead with tonight is Canton Township, the Ford Road project, was included in the supplemental budget. $750,000. You were successful at gardening for the project design phase, and so we're, we're happy to see that in there. You have some specific legislators to thank for that. What had occurred is there was, and the revenue estimating conference that took place in May showed that there was slightly, a slight increase in revenue compared to what they were anticipating. With that increase in revenue, there was some extra money to devote towards special projects. So even though the $750,000 Canton Township has been awarded for, is, is specific to the supplemental, which is the current year, it's considered a work project. So you will be, you will be allowed to continue to spend that into the next fiscal year. So that just occurred today. That was all finalized, and that's the one piece that is not in your report. In addition to that, there is some additional revenue. In addition to that, there is some additional revenue sharing money that's available, based, again, on the consensus revenue estimating conference. They revised the constitutional revenue sharing, as well as added some one-time supplemental revenue sharing for cities, villages, and townships. So Canton Township is going to see a slight increase in the revenue sharing. It is slight. It's roughly 2.6% to 3%. But nonetheless, that's kind of significant, in that since the past 10 years or more, it's been very difficult to get any increase whatsoever in revenue sharing. So some of the details of that are included in your packet. It also included the links to the report, so you can read this verbatim, in both the conference budget report, as well as some fiscal analysis on the revenue sharing piece of it, that's specific to each township or each village, what they're getting. If you look under the Canton Township revenue sharing estimate, you click on that link, which I will also provide you an electronic copy of this. If you go to page 53 of the report, it gives you the specific numbers that Canton Township is going to be estimated to be awarded. The OPEB oversight, that is still contained in the budget. The DTMB is going to continue to bid for that, to continue to do the studies, the cost analysis, try to determine what communities might be financially insecure or insolvent on their OPEB benefits. That's still continuing on. It's in the budget. Emergency 911 payments, there's a slight increase for the emergency 911 rates. This is based on the legislation that was recently passed, that created a new surcharge for updating on the state's 911 systems throughout. So the rates and grants distribution, there's going to be a total, the total payments for that was increased to 48.8 million. There is a slight increase in the first responder presumed coverage fund. This is the cancer presumption fund for first responders. That's important to your first responder community here. The law enforcement grants, there is also a slight increase in that. The law enforcement grants is based on the liquor license, licensing fees, has not been coming in what they were anticipating. They did put some additional money into that, and it's $1.2 million. Going into legislation, individual legislation, that the township is concerned about or wanting to be involved in, the big one recently has been on fireworks. There's been a number of bills introduced in the legislature on this very specific issue, particularly from legislators in the southeast part of the state. Many communities are having a lot of problems with the fireworks going on, and a lot of complaints, and we all are more than aware of that, I'm sure. Representative Lilly, who's from the west side of the state, sponsored some legislation that actually is the first grouping of bills that could have some potential and have some legs, as far as movement. The legislation's still fairly controversial. It does limit the number of days that communities can set off fireworks, but in addition, includes sky lanterns in the definition of fireworks, which currently is not included. And it also allows for a centralized process to determine when fireworks can't be set off due to drought restrictions. Right now, local communities around the state can make that determination. This bill is designed to centralize that. Obviously, there's some real concerns with the local government community, as far as the local control issue on that, who, how this process will work, who gets to make the determination? The legislature says the governor, but there's no specifics on how that process takes place. At this time, to my understanding, there's no agency that makes a statewide burn ban, or goes into a community and puts a burn ban on. It has always been up to the locals. There's been a work group on this. There's some movement being made. It looks like the sky lantern piece may be removed from the definition, which has the public safety community a little bit more at ease. But to my knowledge, there's still a very big debate on the local control piece of this, and that has not been resolved. We did anticipate a hearing on this before the recess for summer, and because of what's been happening, and because of some of the concerns, that did not take place. So we do have the summer now to continue working on this, and we anticipate that to continue going. There's another issue that has been brought to our attention from Canton Township, and it's the Organized Retail Crime Act. The crime racketeering law does not include the definition of organized retail crime. That's been an issue for your law enforcement community. We're working on that. We were looking for a bill sponsor for this, but we had, I think we might have come up to a bit of luck, because we have a bill that was just introduced just over a week ago, opening that very section of law for another purpose. And so we're hopeful to tag on to that, and maybe get some movement a little sooner than we would have anticipated. So that's been what we've been working on here over the last couple of weeks. I also included in your packet a summary of the ballot proposals that are, will be on the ballot, or now won't be on the ballot, as you work on this and keep looking at this. As you know, there's the recreational marijuana ballot proposal. I'll just cover the big items that will be on the ballot. The legislature was, the board canvassers approved the petition signatures. The legislature had until June 6 to act on that, and try to pass their own solution to that, to put it on the ballot. And if they had been successful in that, there would have been an opportu... If it were to pass from the voters, then the legislature would have the ability to amend that law by a simple majority vote. With a voter-initiated law, if the voters approve that, the legislature can't amend it but for a three-quarters vote. And that's a fairly significant barrier to overcome, in order to make any changes on how you regulate it, how the process is going to work. You're going to be really stuck with what that ballot petition says, and what the voters approve. Because the legislature couldn't get the votes needed to enact or put forth their own proposal, the ballot proposal that the signatures that was collected for will be on the ballot. If it passes, the legislature, in order for them to make any change to that in the future, will have to have a three-quarters majority. That's something that's fairly significant, that people need to... It was an issue for the medical marijuana ballot proposal. It had the same burden, and that's why it took nearly, I don't know, eight to 10 years to try to create a regulatory scheme for that that was acceptable, because of the burden of the vote that was necessary. The prevailing wage issue, the legislature did choose to act on that one. They accepted it with the signatures, and as it was written, and so they voted to just approve the repeal of Michigan. Won't be seeing that on the ballot coming up. On the, you'll probably see the voters, not politician. I think that one's going to make it through, frankly. That's the redistricting proposal. The, there was, they did submit their signatures. There was a challenge to the signatures, not necessarily the signatures, excuse me, but the proposal and how it was written. There are several sections in the Constitution that that particular proposal is amending, and so the challengers said that it was actually not a simple change to the Constitution. It was a much broader change, which should, you know, be eligible to knock it off of the ballot. The Court of Appeals, just late last week, said that they did not agree, and they ordered the canvassers to approve the signatures. Obviously, that's going to be sent to the Supreme Court. The opposition to that is going to, I'm sure, challenge that, and we're waiting to see if the Supreme Court will hear that or not. But the time is ticking on that. They're going to have to make a decision here fairly soon, or it will have to move forward. So I anticipate that one to make it to the ballot, but we'll see what the Supreme Court does. The one fair wage, they have submitted their signatures. They have yet to be certified. I'm sure that one's going to be challenged. The, there is an energy, Clean Energy, Healthy Michigan. They did collect the number of signatures they needed, but they were able to work out an agreement with the utility companies on renewable energy, and part of that agreement is they were not going to move forward with the signatures that they collected. So that is some of the major ballot proposals that you will likely see on the ballot. Many of the others included in your summary did not, either, they didn't move forward with it, they just got the petition language approved, and they didn't collect the signatures, or they abandoned it for other ballot initiatives that were similar in nature. So that concludes my report. At the very end of your report is the Canton Township bill tracking. That's what we, I take a very broad brush approach on anything that I think might impact a township, and hopefully, I'm good at figuring that out and putting that on there, and we keep a live tracking for you. If you ever want this, just call me, text me, email me. I can send you an electronic copy of this. If in your networks, I know many of you, I talk to many associations and things that you work with, if there's bills that might not be included on this, again, please let me know, so we can get them part of your tracking, and we can make sure that we're doing what you need, and providing the information that you want. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Board questions or comments?
Thank you very much for the...
Go ahead, Michael.
Questions? And pardon my ignorance, but, so like with the Coalition to Regulate Marijuana, like alcohol, there's an actual law that they're proposing, correct?
Yeah, it's a voter-initiated law.
So in that instance, can you, could you, what would appear on the ballot? Is it a simple yes or no question? I haven't seen the language.
Okay. I have got to dig deep in my memory here. It will appear on the ballot as a question, yes or no. And the actual law, the actual language for the law, will be on the ballot. So you will be voting, you will see what you're voting for, the changes, the amendments to the Constitution that it is making. And it is, in summary, it's recreational marijuana, obviously, and a yes vote will be, you will support the recreational marijuana. A no vote is you do not support recreational marijuana. Does that answer your question?
Sure. Just because, so I had seen a copy of the law, of the bill that they proposed, and it was like eight or nine pages.
Yes.
So I just didn't see how that much information could obviously make it onto a ballot. So it's a summary doc. It's going to be a summary statement?
I think so. I think it all has to appear word for word, with the petition. What you saw in the petition signatures, I don't know if you saw any of the petition signatures. It's pretty small print. I mean, they, I think they get most of it, I think they get it all on there, but I'll double-check for you and find out for certain. But I believe, I believe they have to put the whole text of it on the ballot.
And then my next question was for, so House Bill 6046, which is an elections bill, you had put on here, introduced by Representative Clint Casto. Do you know if there was some assumption that that was going to get a hearing, at least a committee hearing? Do you know if that's...
It has not received a committee hearing.
Okay. And just, you know, for those, I had sent an email out to the entire township board, and I had contacted our state representatives, both Representative Noble and Representative Pagan, on this issue, because what is a relatively rare occurrence is when the entire MAMAC, or Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks Board, voted unanimously to oppose this legislation. Because the group is geographically diverse and politically diverse, and clerks, by their very nature, are some of the most apolitical people you can meet. But to, for them to unanimously vote against, you know, or to, you know, to oppose, to vote to oppose this legislation, I forwarded that information onto them, and I would also recommend anybody at home, or anybody here today, to contact their legislators, and also to contact Representative Casto, who's introduced the bill, and any of the cosponsors of that bill to oppose it. It would, requires a voter who does not have an ID to come back to the clerk's office within six days, even though they fought, they've signed an affidavit, which is punishable by perjury, if there's actual fraud. So they would have signed an affidavit that they are who they say they are, that is filed with the clerk's office and reviewed by the clerk, and, but then they would additionally have to come back to the clerk's office within six days. And so the entire, there's almost unanimity in the entire clerking community opposed to this. So those who administer the election do not support this bill. So I would appreciate it if it does get a committee hearing, because I might make a trip to Lansing if it's not going to be too challenging. You know, we do have an election to administer right now, but...
Okay.
Additional board comment, questions?
I have a question.
Summer, please.
On the $750,000 for Ford Road, what is that money for? Can you talk a little bit more about that?
That's for the design process. It's, hang on here, let me, Ford Road Boulevard Planning Study, specifically.
Okay.
So, and like I said, it's a work project, so you have the current budget session, as well as the next fiscal year, to use that money, utilize that for the planning study.
Simply is to move us closer to 30% design level, closer to being shovel-ready. That's the intent of those ones.
Okay, thank you.
Then my pain point, fireworks is probably in my top 10. Top three are roads, roads, roads. Four would be a bridge. And then between five and 10 is fireworks. Local control, local control. When you've got a 50-foot wide lot, and people shooting off professional-grade fireworks, airborne, it's a problem. So I want you to be as passionate as you can be when you're, you know, filling out your cards and speaking to legislators on our behalf. Local control, please. Populations over 75,000, 90,000, pick a number. Let us control it. You know, the West Branch folks and people up in the UP have no clue what we're dealing with down here.
Right.
Gosh, I know you're all over a lot of different topics. You work with Stephanie directly as well. Greg, I don't know if you, either of you have any hot points, or, because you've talked enough. I think Stephanie knows pretty much where you're at on most topics.
No, I talk with Stephanie quite a bit, and fireworks is really a hot button for us. The sky lanterns is huge. We've had fires caused by sky lanterns in Canton Township. Once those go up, there's no control over where a candle is going to come down. So we're very passionate about seeing that. Not, right now, we can regulate that, because it's not deemed a firework, but if that's added back into legislation, it makes it difficult for us to regulate that. So that, and the other work that she's doing for us on some of the police matters, has
Stephanie? No additional? Thank you very much, Stephanie.
Thank you very much.
Being our voice, we appreciate it. Now, moving on in the agenda. Want to read into the record, or accept into...
Yeah. Mr. Supervisor, I move to accept the presentation into the public record.
Support.
In favor of the motion as presented, as, state aye.
Aye.
It makes it official, Stephanie. You're in the record. Call for a motion to approve the consent calendar, and one more.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as written. With Item C1, consider authorizing the purchase of property adjacent to Float and Park, and approval of the accompanying budget adjustment. Item C2, consider second reading of the Code of Ordinance Amendments to Chapter 106, entitled Stormwater Management Articles 1 and 2, Sections 106-32, 106-34, and 106-70. And Item C3, consider approval of MCACA grant application and acceptance of grant funds up to $100,000.
Support.
In favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to general calendar, Item G1. Consider site plan approval for Primrose School of Canton Childcare Center and Private Road.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution. Whereas the project sponsor has requested site plan approval for Primrose School of Canton, located on the east side of Canton Center Road, south of Cherry Hill Road, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the conceptual development plan and special land use criteria, and voted 8 to 0, to recommend approval of the request, now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the site plan for Primrose School of Canton on part-of-tax parcel listed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Support.
In summary, the site includes a 12,400-square-foot preschool on 1.72 acres of a three-acre site, located on east of Canton Center Road and south of Cherry Hill. site located on east of Canton Center Road and south of Cherry Hill, and a private road to Canton Center from the existing curb cut that will serve the parcel directly on Canton Center, and an office site proposed between the vacant parcel and a proposed daycare center. The site plan meets all the site design standards for daycare, including setbacks and buffers to the existing residential uses to the east and to the south. The structure is a one-story brick building that fits in the surrounding residential usage. We've seen this a couple times before, been through thorough review with the Planning Commission. Is there any questions or comments by the board?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I had noticed in the minutes that, Anne Marie, you had asked about a left-hand turn out there because of the drive, but Wayne County only allows, it has to be a certain distance from an intersection to allow that, is that correct?
Yeah. I don't know if you have it correct. We were concerned about the left turn there coming out, because I know the daycare centers, that's where you see a lot of the buildup at 6:00 AM when people pick up kids or something. There's always a long line. So we were wondering how people might be able to turn left out of there and to discuss, maybe they just would have to make right turns to get out of there at that hour because they can't have a light there.
Having just did it an hour ago for this driveway just to the north, it's a little challenging, you know, you have to, you have to, you know, just use a lot of caution and kind of bide your time until it's really clear to make left out of bushes. Same, it'll basically be a similar issue.
Yeah. Diane was saying that the county had said, well, their standards are it's too close to Ford Road to put another light there.
To Cherry Hill, yeah.
Cross access is not?
It is. I was going to highlight that, the, whoops, sorry. The area where the cross access is going to occur is this little dash line right here. So it's a future cross access to permit a connection between this existing driveway and bushes in the future should bushes in turn grant cross access back to this location and they decide to jointly make that connection.
Potential future or not a current planned future?
Only if bushes were interested in doing it in the future. When they would come in as part of a site plan change on their site, we would request that they make that connection. So that's typically how we handle it with all properties. We can't force bushes to enter into cross access with this site. That's a voluntary matter that bushes would have to agree to in the future.
Understand completely what you just said, and just from my experience in the DDA short-term, last two years, all the access, cross access, it's still in the process of being wrapped up. Would it hurt to ask these developers to ask the question of bushes today just to get a flavor? Because it makes sense to have the cross access. Can't force it, but can we cajole or suggest they move that direction?
Was there any discussion at all with the client regarding that?
Hi, my name's Candace Pryor. I'm with Metro Consulting Associates with a civil engineer for Primrose. That I don't know. This product is a little unique in that there's two separate owners involved. The current property owner is retaining the property that will have the curb cut on it as well as the undeveloped piece just west of Primrose. He is the one that initially developed the private road plans and had the discussions with that cross access, so I'm not entirely sure if he had any discussion with bushes or not. I can ask the question, but yeah, as far as if that's a discussion that's happened already, I'm not sure.
Please ask the question because based on, again, the experience with the DDA district and needing cross access desperately to improve safety, I'd like to think ahead here if we could a little bit and see if there's willingness. Ask the question and give feedback to Tim. It's not going to impact my decision tonight, but would just like to know what the thoughts are from the property owners today.
Certainly.
Any additional board comments? I see a couple new faces in the audience. If you're here and want to make a comment regarding an agenda item that we're covering, the time to make that would be kind of like now in an agenda item as we're moving through this evening. So is there any public comment that would like to be made at this point regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good night. Consider award of purchase order contract to value carpet and more for removal and replacement of carpet at the Canton Public Works Facility.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order contract to value carpet and more in an amount not to exceed $24,567.16.
Okay, I was just recently over there. They went out, got competitive bids, this is the low bid. Are there any board questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G3. Consider award purchase order contract to Suburban Calcium Chloride Sales for the 2018 Dust Control Program for local gravel roads.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order contract to Suburban Calcium Chloride Sales of Taylor, Michigan to provide Canton's 2018 Dust Control Program on local gravel roads for an amount not to exceed $16,000.
Support.
In summary, fugitive dust from unpaved surface roads can be significant and a nuisance to those who are living adjacent to the roads. In the past, Canton Township's agreed to fund the cost of dust control for seven miles of local roads that are not part of the Wayne County DPS Dust Control Program. Hence, the presentation we have in the board packet tonight. Are there any board questions or comments? Diane, please.
Yeah, just real quick, Tim, why does Wayne County not have these roads on their dust control list or whatever?
Yeah, this dates back, this dates back a long, a long time ago, actually, and even some litigation between the townships in Wayne County over the dust control program. But their position is that they do not provide dust control on what are called local gravel roads. So these are the, you know, little streets like Herbie and Deion and those types of roads. They consider those subdivision roads. They argued they don't receive adequate PAC, Public Act 51 money to perform those services and actually won that argument against the townships a number of years ago.
I don't know if you remember, I think we shared with some of the, I thought we shared with the board member, we went down that rabbit hole based on the roads. And the question was being asked, could we sue Wayne County for not doing their job? And what we determined is Canton Township actually tried it before and lost. We lost part of the case. We won the case where the court said it's okay to sue Wayne County, but Wayne County gets to decide what and how their performance levels are, not you individual communities. So that's the bad news, bad news from that one.
And ever since that time, we've been funding this additional service.
Thank you, Tim.
No other comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item G5. Consider first reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 54, Article 2 of the Canton Code of Ordinances to exempt certain peddlers and solicitors.
I think you missed an item. You missed G4?
Hutch paving. Thank you very much for the, item G4, consider approval of a budget amendment and award of a contract to Hutch Paving for the 2018 Township Parking Lot Paving Program.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a contract to Hutch Paving in the amount not to exceed $785,582.33 for the 2018 Canton Township Parking Lot Paving Program.
Here, the engineering services staff with Leisure Services staff prioritize various township-owned parking lots improvements across the community. This year, the highest priority project based on pavement condition is the replacement of the asphalt parking lot at the East Administration Building and Public Safety Buildings and a completion of the West Summit Parking Lot. Staff is recommending award of contract to Hutch Paving for this program in the amount of 714,165.75 plus a 10% contingency for a total amount of 785,582.33. This amount is 187.298 higher than the budgeted amount, therefore the budgeted amendment of 187.298. That's 187,000, correct? Not $187? Thank you. 187,298 is required to fund the construction project for the community, from the Community Improvement Fund. Previously, the design was awarded to NCI for $51,715, which necessitates the budget amendment to be 187,298. We drove these roads together as Greg and I or Tim and I, just recently. This basically our front door at the summit and Township Hall, and they're in horrific shape and it's time to get them fixed. We delayed a lot of community improvement projects over the years because of budget reductions, revenue reductions. Now we're coming back to normal. There's an opportunity to catch up. Are there any staff comments? Please, Michael.
I would just request that Leisure Services and Municipal Services make sure that on August 7th during the election that the, there is adequate parking spaces for the people who will be working on the election. I see that we'll begin work in July and we'll end work in September, and that just piqued my interest a little bit. The summit is also a polling location, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, not sure if that was incorporated in the plans, but obviously, Greg and I will go back and talk with the staff about coordinating that. We did coordinate the summit shutdown in the plans and Liberty Fest, but I'm not sure about election. We'll have to ask the engineers.
Anne Marie?
Do you have any other projects that we look at spending this year that we might not have in the capital budget improvement plan or that we have not budgeted?
Question is, is there any additional items that may?
For this year, right?
That are not budgeted?
Correct, that we think.
In emergencies? Are contingencies and set-asides right in budgets for some contingency spending?
Right, we do have half a million dollars in the general fund for contingency in case of an emergency. In this situation, we did look at where some capital projects had come in under budget and used some, utilized some of those leftover funds to help pay for this, but there are emergencies. There's going to be a couple items later tonight yet that were not necessarily budgeted that were emergencies that we have to fix. So I believe everything else that we've budgeted for, we're planning on spending at this point in time. There's nothing else that I'm aware of at this point in time that we are planning on coming to the board that it was not budgeted unless it's an emergency.
Your point, Anne Marie, is with each of these things that do pop up, staff is challenged to go back into budgets and find offsets. And between Greg and Wendy, they did quite a bit of that here on this particular item where the budget adjustment, adjustment being requested, is less than what would have been if they didn't go back and scratch. So that happens on every event that's outside the box.
How did we determine how much to increase the revenue for the transfer into fire and police?
Transfer in from fire and police?
Yeah.
The front parking lot was allocated based on front footage space, so there's a portion of it that goes to the fire station, there's a portion that's in front of police, and then the rest of it's administration. So it was a percentage of that cost depending on the front footage of all of those buildings. And so, and previously, initially when the budget was adopted, we were going to be doing some work at the back end of the fire, of the building. So it was fleet, fire, and police, we're going to be paying for that. So the breakdown in the percentages were off a little bit because it was higher police when the budget was initially adopted, low, less fire, and now it's kind of flip-flopped. That back parking lot is, we moved the projects around because of some additional requirements to provide some safety back there that we still needed some more time to plan out exactly what we needed back there as far as protecting that back entrance for public safety purposes. So we kind of flip-flopped those two to give public safety more time to figure out exactly what we needed to do, and therefore the funding between police and fire also flip-flopped a little bit as a result of that. So, long story short, the total that we're paying, police, fire in general, is based on the front footage of this front parking lot. You're welcome.
It'll include that big hole that's right there.
Guess it will. Finally. Okay, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now moving.
I move to approve the budget amendment on the attached sheet.
Support.
Those in favor of the budget amendment as presented by Clerk Segras, state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. G5. Now we didn't go through the one and two motions.
I, yeah.
Item G5, consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 54, Article 2 of Canton Code of Ordinances to exempt certain peddlers and solicitors from licensing requirement if participating in a township-sponsored event.
This is in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends Chapter 54, Article 2 of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
In terms of a summary, the board is asked, being asked to adopt amendment to Chapter 54, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances to exempt certain vendors from participating in township-sponsored events from having to obtain a solicitor's license. And then we go on with the language changes in the board packet. Are there any board questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G6. Whoops, second motion.
Supervisor, I move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for June 26, 2018.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G6, consider approval of emergency replacement of rooftop unit at the Administration Public Safety Building and a budget amendment. Two motions.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the below amendment to the 2018 fire budget. Increase expenditure to capital outlay buildings account for $23,289, and then to decrease expenditures to transfer to the fund balance account for $23,289.
Support.
This is one of those didn't see it coming. Rooftop unit number 12 of Canton Administration Building has failed. Canton Leisure Services has determined that the repairs would be impractical based on the unit's age, overall condition, and estimated costs. Unit 12 serves the fire administration area of public safety. This is a train 15-ton unit, was originally installed in 95 to heat and cool that area. At present, one of the three compressors is bad, and both of the condensing coils are in need of replacement as neither can hold a refrigerant and cannot be repaired. Goyet Mechanical provided a quote for the replacement of unit number 12 at $20,0289, indicated that the lead time for the equipment is one week. Bass Mechanical quoted $31,916, indicated that they had a four-week lead time. Due to the urgent need of the replacement and the extremely uncomfortable work conditions caused by the excessive heat in the area, is recommended that the emergency purchase order be authorized to Goyet Mechanical from Flint, Michigan in the amount of $23,289, which includes a $3,000 contingency to cover any unforcing conditions that may occur during the replacement. Diane, please.
Just real quick, how long do these rooftops usually last?
Life expectancy would be 15 to 20 years.
15 to 20 years, okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve an emergency purchase order for the replacement of the Mechanical Rooftop Unit Number 12 on the Canton Township Administration Public Safety Building to Goyet Mechanical at 3842 Gorey Avenue, PO Box 33, Flint, Michigan 48501 in the amount of $23,289 to be paid from the account number listed for capital outlay buildings.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G7, consider approval of proposal for engineering of Patriot Park and a budget amendment.
This is in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase revenues to the contributions from local unit for $112,377. Decrease revenues from the fund balance appropriation account for $52,430, and increase expenses to capital outlay land improvements for $59,947.
Diane had supported? Very good. Okay, in order to plan for the future development of Patriot Park and take advantage of and take advantage of potential future development agreements that could improve the site, staff determined that the park property should be engineered. Therefore, Michael L. Priest Associates was requested to provide proposals since the engineer of record for the current layout of the property, he is, they are, the current engineer of record for the current layout of the property, the engineering scope of services and the amount of $30,000 is shown in the deck tonight for proposal for professional services. The funding for the park engineering will be provided through a, the board approved in a governmental agreement with Wayne County for improvements to Patriot Park from 2017 budgets. The original IGA was in the amount of $112,377 and currently we have spent $52,430, which leaves $59,946.56 with the expense of $30,000 for this project. The remaining budget for the future project will be $29,946. Once all the funds have been expensed, we will submit for reimbursement from Wayne County. The unspent budget from 2017 was not rolled into 2018. Therefore, a budget amendment for all the unspent grant monies is now necessary. Are there any board questions or comments? Okay, very good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to approve the proposal for professional services for the development of Patriot Park from Michael L. Priest and Associate Incorporated for 0655 Coppernick Road here in Canton, Michigan 48187 in the amount of $30,000 to be paid from the account number listed, Capital Outlay Land Improvements.
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G8. Consider acceptance of Masco Corporation's $10,000 sponsorship for Lead Like a Girl program.
Mr. Supervisor, this will be in the form of two motions as well. I move to accept the sponsorship from the Masco Corporation for the Block Youth and Teen Center for the 2018-2019 school year to implement the leadership initiative Lead Like a Girl in the amount of $10,000 with $3,500 to be taken from the account number sponsorships and moved to the other account number for operating supplies for the 2018 budget.
Support.
Canton Leisure Services and Block Youth and Teen Center were offered a $10,000 sponsorship from Masco Corporation for the 2018-2019 school year to support the implementation of Lead Like a Girl program. We are recommending that the Township Board accept the sponsorship and increase both the revenue expenses by $3,500 for the budget. The remainder of the money, $6,500, will be requested to transfer in 2019. What's not in your board package here is Laura Mortier from Leisure Services doggedly pursued at Masco for this generous donation, which we do appreciate. If it were not for her tenacity and perseverance, this would not have happened. So we've all, I think, expressed our appreciation for that. Also, Diane and Anne Marie, you recently attended the Lead Like a Girl graduation program. This is probably one of the most special programs that we have in the community. And I don't know if you guys want to add something to that?
I just wanted to say it is a fantastic program. And hopefully, you know, we let more folks know about it. A lot of the graduates actually are mentors for the class, the class that attends right now. So, you know, I was very impressed at both the staff and the girls and the mentors that keep, keep coming back to help out. It was a great program.
It was nice. And hopefully, we can get more sponsors, we can get more girls through it too.
Please don't, or please also consider that Lead Like a Girl tends to be more donor-friendly than Be a Model Man program, which is the same program we have for the young men. So for out promoting, I, you know, I mentioned it recently to the Boys and Brews, a community-based organization, that, you know, hey, you guys should do something here too. And so they're looking at it. But that's, that's a group that we need to dial up the campaign for, is the Be a Model...
Program.
I'll just congratulate, you know, Leisure Services is always working hard to get grants. It always impresses me. And Laura, you know, that's awesome that she got this. So congratulations and thank you for that.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following 2018 budget amendments. Increase revenues to the scholarships account for $3,500 and increase expenses to the operating supplies for the same amount, $3,500.
In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G9. Consider approvals of proposals for summer, summit aquatic center roof improvements.
Mr. Supervisor, I move, this is in the form of two motions again, sorry. I move to approve the purchase order for Sheena Roofing, 28299 Kirig Drive, Chesterfield, Michigan 48047 in the amount of $21,522 for the Summit Aquatic Roof, Aquatic Center Roof improvements with funds to be paid from the account number for capital outlay buildings and improvements.
This is one where I'm going to go off the script here a little bit. And the summit roof was, we were looking at a complete replacement or rework. It's going to be very, very expensive. This is one where Greg's team took a harder look at it and said, you know what? If we do some of these maintenance repair type items now, we can get a little more life out of the roof without spending the significant bill that is coming at us in our community improvement plan. Did I accurately reflect what's, what happened there?
Yes, the, the, what we've, through our research, what we've found is the copper roof should be a 50-year-life roof. It was not installed correctly initially. So there are leaks that are coming through. It's eroding the insulation in between the metal layers. And if you come to the Aquatic Center on a rainy day, you'll see kind of a black tar-like substance, which is the eroded insulation and wood between the layers dripping down the roof and onto chairs and that sort of thing. So what we're looking at doing is sealing off the areas where it's leaking and the roof system wasn't put in properly in the first place so that we can delay the total replacement of the roof, which will be probably in the $500,000 to $800,000 range once that comes time to do.
Go ahead, Diane.
How long do you think, once they repair this, how much more life? How many years will this add to it?
They're guaranteeing the materials and the workmanship for a year. It's anticipated it would, it ought to, but they can't, they won't guarantee anything because this is not a routine type of thing. It's kind of a one-off type of repair. They're expecting at least three to five years additional life, but it could be 10-plus years if, as long as the seals hold. It's one of those things that we're trying something that's a fraction of the cost with the hopes of delaying a much larger cost. And if it works properly, we could get 10-plus years out of it. But it's, there's no guarantees with that either.
Just out of curiosity, we had to replace some carpet in the summit because I believe the foundation below was...
Yes.
Was, was not put in properly and now the roof has not been put in properly. Can you just maybe give us a historical perspective? 20 years ago, maybe what was happening when this thing was constructed? Because it seems like this is the second kind of fairly large...
I wasn't here, so...
I'm not looking for blame, I'm just looking for context.
Right, right, right. So, no, I know you're not looking to blame. We don't know if there was issues where there was cost cutting, if there wasn't proper inspections that were done at the time of it. I really don't know what the root cause of the, like, the foundation issue what was done was the, when the footings were poured, the concrete was over-poured. So you had the footing come up and it kind of flashed out. So then when the frost, so the footings are below the frost level, but the frost pushes on that, that piece of concrete that sticks out and that's what has caused the heaving. So we had to go and chip away at that overpour on the concrete. So I don't know if it wasn't inspected, if it just wasn't installed properly, or what was happening at the time that those, those issues came up.
Root cause is understood, but it's still there.
Yes, we know what the root cause. I can't explain why that happened or what happened. We've looked at, we've had Kristen Kolb look at, are there any ways we can go back? But it's been too long since these things were installed. So there's no recourse on the, the original companies that did the install with that. And many of the companies that did the actual workmanship are no longer around.
All right.
No other questions, comments? Those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, second motion here.
Supervisor, I further move to approve the purchase order for Roofing Technologies Associates, 35th 38031, Schoolcraft, Livonia, Michigan 48150 in the amount of $4,000 for the Summit Aquatic Center roof improvements with funds to be paid from the account number listed for capital outlay buildings and improvements.
Support.
In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G10. Consider approval of contract for tree and vegetation services.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize yourself, the supervisor, to sign a contract with Wild Type Native Plants Ecological Services, LTD, at 900 North Everie Road in Mason, Michigan 48854 for tree and vegetation services for a three-year agreement with an option for a three-year renewal. Costs will be determined on a project-by-project basis based on fee schedule provided in the agreement.
Support.
April 5th, 2018, proposals were received for tree and vegetation services. A full summary of the services requested is in the attached contract. Some of the services included but are not limited to tree care, assist with tree management, maintenance programs, natural area invasive species removal, assistance with development of natural area vegetation management maintenance programs, a team of township staff and Municipal Services Leisure Services selected Wild Type Navy Plants Ecological Services. And we're asking that we enter into a three-year agreement with them with an option for a three-year renewal. Costs will be determined on the project-by-project basis based on the fee schedule provided in the attached agreement. Are there any board comments, questions? This program is primarily driven by Lee Thurston for us?
It's, it's a coordination between Leisure Services Park Staff and Lee Thurston in Municipal Services.
Under the maintenance, facilities, maintenance side with engineering?
Correct, because it affects a lot of our township-owned properties in terms of parks and open spaces where we have a lot of invasive species that are causing some serious issues that we need a plan to address.
Board comment, questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And was that a single?
Correct.
Okay, very good. G11. Consider approval of payment of annual Western Wayne County Mutual Aid Association dues.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve payment of the 2018 Western Wayne County Mutual Aid Association dues in the amount of $11,919.03.
Support.
Canton Fire Department is a member of the Western Wayne County Mutual Aid Association, a consortium of approximately 20 departments throughout Western Wayne, Washtenaw, and Oakland Counties. This association is under the inter-local agreement in conjunction with the Urban Cooperation Act of 1976. The agreement allows departments to provide reciprocal, reciprocal services to each other when requested. Canton's dues are $11,919.03. Are there any board comments or questions for Director Meyer? Good program, works for us. Very good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Consider the purchase of a one-year extended warranty for 800 megahertz radios and associated budget amendment for 2018 E911 account.
Form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve purchase of a Motorola one-year extended warranty for 226 mobile and portable 800 megahertz radios in the amount of $15,810 from Comm Source Incorporated at 41271 Concept Drive in Plymouth, Michigan.
Support.
Our warranty for these portable radios did expire at the end of May and we would like to extend that warranty in the amount for the $15,810. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Michael?
I see that we're decreasing the transfer to fund balance. Was this not budgeted or? I'm sorry.
It had initially been budgeted. When we prepared the budget back in whatever year it was, since we're two years in advance, there was a little snafu. There was a phone call to finance to say we can reduce the budget by $30,000 from the initial budget, which we did. And then there was also a follow-up email sent at a later date that, just to kind of confirm it was going down $30,000. And we did it another $30,000. So initially, it had been budgeted. Finance accidentally reduced $30,000 twice. So it had been budgeted and then a little miscommunication there on finances' part.
Okay.
We're cleaning it up.
And extending the contract, or the warranty at the same time. All right, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to approve the below 2018 E911 budget amendment of a decrease in expense to transfer to fund balance for $20,000 and increase expense professional contractual services for $20,000.
Support.
In favor of the second motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G13. Consider request to purchase one fire engine and a 2018 budget amendment.
In the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one 2018 Pierce Enforcer fire engine in the amount of $571,849 from Halt Fire Incorporated at 50168 West Pontiac Trail, Unit 5 in Wixom, Michigan 48393.
Support.
Fire Department, upon recommendation of Fleet Services, is requesting purchase one fire engine to replace a 2002 La France fire engine. To maintain continuity in the fleet, the department is requesting to waive the bidding process and purchase a duplicate Pierce Enforcer fire engine purchased in 2017. Through competitive bidding process, purchasing the same fire engine would provide numerous cost savings, including minimal to no engineering design costs, out-of-state manufacturing, meeting costs, and operational training costs as the staff has already been trained on the operation of the Pierce Enforcer. Also, I can share with you, based on the recent Fire Industries Symposium held in Novi where our engine was on display, all the other fire departments were gaga over our 2017 purchase truck. So it's, it's a hot item out in the market today. So the cost of one Pierce Enforcer engine is $571,849. Fire fund balance would be utilized for this purchase through the approval of a 2018 budget amendment included in this request. Are there any board comments or questions? Anne Marie?
Do we get any credit for turning in the old engine or selling it or?
We could, but the, one of them has crashed and has an S and zero value at this point. And the other one, we estimate, what'd they estimate? About $5,000 trade-in value? Because it's, it's no longer in production and just like we can't, nobody else can get parts for it to keep it on the road.
What do we do with it then?
It'll likely be sold at auction. And some department may or may not pick it up for parts to keep theirs on the road.
Are there any drug forfeiture funds to help pay for it, like we paid for some other?
Not use drug forfeiture to purchase fire department equipment. It has to be for police purposes only.
Good, Michael?
So, it's a little over half a million dollar hit to the fund balance in, for police... I'm sorry, for fire. I just did, I just did it. And now I also know we're building a building. And what's the, what's the police fund balance going to look like when this is all said and done? And...
And is there discussion about using bonding for the, for the building?
Wendy's checking on the fund balance. The answer to the, whether or not we're going to use bonding for the construction of the building, that's something that the finance director, myself, and the supervisor have had discussions about. I think really what that comes down to is some further discussion on how we're going to address some of the OPEB liabilities on the fire department's side, whether we may or may not use fund balance for that. But I think Wendy can probably, I think it's, the current fund balance of the fire department is at six point seven million, and that has been estimated. We use a portion of that for the reconstruction of Station Number Two.
Delivery of one of these trucks is approximately months?
Ten months is what we're looking at right now. Ten monthly time.
And we'll have three?
We'll have three new trucks, and then we will have two in reserve capacity. There are two thousand and six with roughly about a hundred and sixty thousand miles on them.
We'll have to purchase more, right, for the new?
How, how long?
Thousand and six. Right now, we're slating out to probably 2024-ish. Again, that just, you know, it just depends on wear and tear. The three engines will put us in good shape for the time being, and then the two that will be in reserve capacity. The NFPA sets guidelines that a front-run fire truck can be in service for a max of fifteen years, and then it has to go to reserve capacity. That's the National Fire Protection Association standard. So, right now, we're well within that standard.
Questions or comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented? State aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion to...
Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment to the 2018 fire budget. Increase appropriations to capital outlay vehicles account for five hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and decrease appropriations to transfer to fund balance for five hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Favor the second motion as presented? State aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G fourteen, acceptance of the 2017 audit presentation.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to receive and place on file the 2017 Township's comprehensive annual financial report.
Support.
Those who are not here earlier, the Township's auditing firm, Plant Moran, has completed the 2017 annual financial audit and presented the final results to us this evening during the study session earlier. I don't expect, but are there any board comments or questions? Michael, please.
I just want to commend this organization, finance in general, Supervisor's office, this board, previous boards. I think strategic decisions to aggressively tackle the pension obligations, OPEB liabilities, long-term budget plans. I am proud to serve on this board with you all and to work with you all. I think that the three million dollar OPEB transfer from last year was a very wise choice to make, and so I just wanted to, to say that. It's been a while since those, we've publicly kind of talked about those, those obligations, and I think that we've been doing the right thing. So, congratulations to everybody, and I was glad to see a clean bill of financial health.
Think earlier, mostly other comments, questions, concerns? Very good. Those in favor of the motion as presented? Please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G fifteen, award CBD, CDBG housing rehabilitation contracts.
Form of two, Mr. Supervisor. I move to award the contract for a housing rehabilitation at Fernwood to strengthen home improvement in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Support.
At Canton's Affordable Housing Program, formal bid procedures were followed and public bid opening was held May twenty-fourth, 2018 for the CDBG housing rehabilitation program. The bid results for the projects ready for board approval are attached in our decks. The housing rehabilitation program pays for major and minor repairs to owner-occupied single-family homes in Canton. The participating families must meet HUD income requirements, and only one company this year submitted the bids for the two projects that we have. I think most of the board has seen this, these type items in the past. Anybody who would like to review the files, they're more than welcome to. They're held in the finance office. Are there any board comments or questions? Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Wondering, how much is left in this? Weren't we awarded sixty-something grand? How much do we have left for other projects?
We, in the current year, we're doing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards CDBG-type projects. I'm not sure how much is left of that after these projects. The new CDBG project year, we just had the advisory council meeting last week where they heard the pitches from people who were applying for the grant dollars. We have to leave that open for public comment for so, so long. But I can tell you what's going to come forth for the board for next year, which starts July first, will be another hundred thousand dollars. Plus, we still have some money left over from the past. So, the amount allocated for the year that will end June thirtieth was a hundred and fifty, and I can't tell you, I can look into it and get you an answer, but I don't know off the top of my head how much of that has been obligated. But we do have another hundred thousand that we'll be recommending beginning July first.
What the CDBG board just reviewed and agreed to in concept, will that come before this board again for final approval?
Yes, the Township Board has ultimate authority to approve that, but the CDBG Advisory Council gets our grant requirements of getting public input on what we should be spending grant dollars for. You're welcome.
Questions? Those in favor of the first motion as presented? Please state aye.
Aye.
We have a second motion here.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award the contract for a housing rehabilitation at North Sheldon to strengthen home improvement in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented? Please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that concludes the formal business on the agenda this evening. Is there any public comments? Additional public comment? Is there any additional? None. All staff is getting prepared for Liberty Fest this weekend. A lot of focus and attention on that. We've got our public forum tomorrow night. All trustees are, hopefully, will be able to join us and... Questions? Is there any issue, board comments or questions? Four P M. to seven P M. is the forum, yes.
People at Liberty Fest wearing these shirts, feel free to ask us questions about the roads.
No throwing anything. And, oh, we have the trustee coffee hour on Saturday also.
What time is that?
Nine A M. at Big B Coffee, right on Ford and Canton Center.
Fortunately, I will be running in the Liberty Run ten K at that time.
Run by for coffee.
Show up and bring me a bottle of water. I don't know, I don't know if I'm going to finish. I'm going to start.
John and I will be working the pancake with the Lions Club Pancake Breakfast.
I will get pancakes.
It's going to be a busy weekend for everybody, I'm sure, and for staff positively. I think this is, in terms of accumulated overtime over a short period of time, this is, this is the week. So, a lot of activity out there.
And then Sunday will be Father's Day, so happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there.
Busy week.
And if I can, just leave with a little fact from our study session. The engineering firm we had hired to do an assessment, a Pacer rating of the roads, if I am paraphrasing Director Foss correctly, currently, our average rating in Canton Township is five point three out of ten. And if we continue the way things are going, in twenty years, it'll be a two point six, which I know the supervisor shared an image a couple of days ago.
There we have that back there.
Roads below five point seven are four times more expensive to repair than roads above five point seven. So, that was a very scary number you shared with us today, Tim. I'm a little bit shocked by it.
Are we putting that on the website also?
Probably already there. Or if not, there will be tomorrow. Yeah, coming soon.
Do we have any new events, though, at the Liberty Fest this weekend? Anything new?
Drone show Friday night. That should be very exciting. So, that'll be a drone show at nine thirty and ten fifteen on Friday night.
Heard a lot of families with kids with sensory issues are excited about that, so...
Yes, it should be very exciting.
If I may, the Firefighters Charity Foundation will also be doing a barbecue on Saturday to benefit their charity. So, I know the cook. It's extremely good barbecue, so I encourage you to come out and get a plate of barbecue to support the charity foundation.
That, that will be located near the amphitheater with all the food trucks and the Taste of Canton restaurants. So, instead of the traditional location for spaghetti dinner over at the north pavilion, if you are looking to benefit the firefighters, head on over to the amphitheater and look for their barbecue truck.
And the Rotarians are serving adult beverages?
Yes, they will be in the same area. It'll be a large fenced-in area with all of the restaurants, all of the food truck, all of the beverages, and a concert for you to enjoy.
What, what time is the barbecue?
Yeah, I think it starts at eleven and goes almost all day. I guess eight P M. maybe, nine P M. ish? Or until they run out?
Probably till they run out. That's what most of the, the food trucks and restaurants do, is they're serving until it's gone.
Lot of food.
Seeing no additional board questions? Staff, any additional comments, questions? I think, okay, very good. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Favor of the motion as presented? State aye.
Aye.
Good night, all be safe out there.